Good afternoon, everyone. I will call the workshop session to order. First item of business is discussion and presentation from Derek Barrios, Elcheck.
Thank you, Mayor Monroe. And thank you to the city council for your time today. Good afternoon, I'm Derek Barrios, Director of the Lampasses County Higher Education Center. For those who don't know me, I'm familiar with some of the members, but Mr. Clark and Mr. Pierce, I'd like to introduce myself. Over the past 12 years, Elcheck has provided training, community education, and higher education to a broad swath of our community and region. Since 2010, over 1,100 Central Texas college students have taken courses at our facility. Since 2013, over 650 students were certified through our allied healthcare training program. Programs, that is. The average starting wage actually went up this year for our graduating students to $14 an hour. And that's mostly through our certified medical assistance. We actually, there's such a demand for that in that field right now that we actually just hired a second instructor so we can run classes concurrently. 650 students have attended our adult educate, community education courses, and we have provided over 860 children since 2012 with educational entertaining summer courses as part of the annual College for Kids program which we just wrapped up two weeks ago. Overall, more than 3,200 students have passed through our doors since 2010. As a nonprofit, we rely heavily on grants and donations. In the event that we are not awarded a proposed grant in a fiscal year, we are left with a deficit that must be filled through the generosity of our donors. My goal as director has been to make sure that Elcheck becomes a self-sustaining entity. However, our main goal is to provide affordable workforce training for our community and for our region. Therefore, we can arbitrarily raise fees whenever we have a shortfall. To do so would price us out of the market and would be counterproductive to our goals. We must keep in mind the ability of the community members to pay for said training. I will continue to seek ways to trim expenses while increasing revenue, but donations from our invested partners are a key part of Elcheck's ability to continue its mission. We continue our strategic partnerships with Granite Mesa Assisted Living of Marble Falls, Advent Health here in Lampasses, Lily Springs Rehab here in Lampasses, and Scott and White throughout the Hill Country region. Our intention is to create additional partnerships with the appropriate organizations and facilities to guarantee a steady stream of income in students. And we continue to look for additional partners in various fields we provide training for. We are confident in our belief that Elcheck is an economic driver for this community and for this region, and that the loss of our facility would have a detrimental effect on our city and our surrounding communities. Like the city, we are trying to advance the economic prosperity of our citizens. This in turn provides business owners with an educated workforce and customer base. We will continue to study trends and statistics in determining the workforce training courses to be offered in the future at our facility. We're constantly refining and adding to our list of career training programs and other offerings. We would also like to remind our fellow citizens of the other opportunities that we provide at Elcheck. We are the only institution providing GED preparation within a 35-mile radius of Lampasses City. Dozens of our fellow citizens benefit from this free program offered in conjunction with CTC, Central Texas College. As for our workforce students, we provide other training services such as frequently updated job boards, resume writing, and interview preparation. Our goal is to make sure that those who worked hard and completed their training have all the support they need to find employment in said field. Before I go, I'd like to thank the city council for the opportunity to speak here today. We ask for your continued support in the form of a contribution at the prior level of $8,500. Without the support of the county, and the city, and the overall community, it would be close to impossible to provide the variety of services and programs that we offer. I thank you for your past and for your continued support.
Thank you, Derek.
Any questions from the council? Thank you for your time.
Did a good job, Ben. Thank you.
Next order is discuss and review the City of Lampasses Personnel Policy, Section 8.00. Leave time, Section 8.08, Public Service.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item was discussed briefly at the last meeting, and I believe it was the desire of those present at that time to bring it back for a fuller discussion with the members that were unable to attend at that time. This item is a request to consider modifying and clarifying Section 8.08 of the Personnel Policy and Guidelines to allow employees to volunteer during their regular working hours for such events as Spring Ho Vision, Christmas on the Creek, et cetera. I think when this section was drafted, and I recall because I was the one that drafted that, it was primarily for the desire to get folks, encourage our employees to volunteer for the Lampasses Volunteer Fire Department, provide other kind of direct aid service as the examples indicate, giving blood, mentoring youth, et cetera. However, it's certainly worthy of consideration, this type of public service. Good policy should not be able to be interpreted differently by somebody else that's sitting in my seat in the future, and so that's why I think good policy is incumbent upon clarity and parameters so that it can be consistent throughout the life of it. Nor do I want to put the city or any staff person in a position where a claim could be made regarding preferential interpretation. Staff believes it's a good policy to clarify service to include community festivals per the recommended language in the corresponding action items. I would welcome your comments and input.
Comment?
I have a comment. I think it's important that y'all support, because the city can't operate without volunteers. Volunteers on boards, volunteers on council, you know, volunteers even when it's, you've got your community police volunteers. And so, since we need volunteers, I think it's important for the city employees to be able to give back and volunteer to other community events. And so, I think this is a good thing. My only concern is limiting like what they can and can't volunteer in. I think that that needs to, that, as long as it is related to the community, I think that's important.
And certainly, I think that goes back to the comment I made, that clarity is important, and if you have a broadly or a vague policy, it can be interpreted slightly different depending on who's doing the interpretation. So, if we say community service organizations, community festivals, et cetera, would that adequately cover?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't get it too narrow. Like, you can do A, B, and C, but you can't do D. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Mayor?
Would that be limited to just our local community, though? Like, if you have an employee that doesn't live here but wants to be a part of the community they live in? I mean, can we keep it to just?
I think that's certainly a good question, and I would defer to council on that. If you wanted to limit it to local events, that's fine, or, you know, we do have a number of employees that, for example, live in Low Mida, and they have big community events up there, too. So, I would go on whatever council's preference is on that.
Mr. Clark?
When it was first brought to our attention two weeks ago, I hadn't really had much time to think about it, and I was against any part of it. I expect all our employees to be community oriented as far as supporting, and I think they do support many of the activities that go on through their city employment. I think it would be hard for some of the staff, some of the departments, such as the parks, and I use the term streets, and most of these festive events go on during the summertime with the exception of the Christmas on the Creek. But, most of the time, they're extremely busy, and we have limited staff anyhow. You know, if this is what it takes to get them involved, then I won't stand against it. But, I just think we have a very lucrative package for the employees currently as far as vacation and so on and so forth. And so, I would ask that we carefully consider limiting that at that time.
And there is language in 8.08 currently that does suggest that the service would be allowed as long as it does not disrupt the working needs of the city.
Right.
And that's what concerned me. Most of those, like, streets and parks are small staff, and if somebody's out sick, you know, or for other reasons they've got regarding vacations and so on, they may have a very limited staff, and I don't want to take away from their abilities to fulfill the needs during normal working hours.
Any other comments? Concerns, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Finley. Next item is discussion and updates regarding city projects.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Wanted to go over a couple of projects. Some are already ongoing, some are in the works, some are in design. There's some projects in some different phases right now, and so I wanted to brief council on that. So, the first one, and I'll go down the list, I think that's in the packet. What we did was, we put a spreadsheet together showing the different departments with those projects, kind of where it's at as far as scoping proposal, design, identified funding, if it has that. If it's under construction, has it been advertised, is it awarded? And then, kind of the timeframes for fiscal year when these projects would probably kick off. And the first one is the Business Park, and I think everybody's well aware of that one. It's underway. I was out there last week, and a lot of the roadway and some of the infrastructure as far as water sewers in, the detention area's been completed for a little while. And so, that project, depending on materials and kind of timeframe of possible upcoming change orders, it's still on track, and I think actually, Gage and Kate, who the contractor that's of record is, is actually ahead, probably a schedule at this point. So, the Business Park is moving ahead. Second Street rebuild from Western Domain, so that's one that we've been working with the engineer on. We have, if everybody's familiar with the post office is, the old post office, basically removing what's there as far as the road. There's an old drainage structure that runs under that along the curb, and so cleaning that up, making it ADA accessible. And that project is in the preliminary design phase. We just looked at the proposal, so the next phase will be preliminary. We still need to bring the proposal before council. Live Oak and Pecan, those are two projects. Live Oak is water, Pecan is wastewater. Both of those are to make connectivity. The water line will help loop the system in down Live Oak. Pecan is in need for that area to improve the sewer. And both of those projects have had some preliminary design on them, but we did receive a proposal. There were some preliminary design done probably a year and a half ago, just to look at the feasibility of those two projects. So, we do have a proposal in hand that we'll be bringing back to council on those two. We have the HMAC, which is our paving project. That's the one that we just awarded. We're waiting for documents to get that project started. That's the overlay asphalt project in different locations around the city. Our Seal Coat paving project is an internal project that our Streets Department manages yearly. We've identified some of those streets. Again, we'll be reaching out to residents to move their cars and to kind of get prepped and ready for that. We'll be letting them know in advance. The Skate Park has been approved. As far as the final design is complete, the dirt work part of that is the upcoming phase. So, basically getting that piece moving forward and contracting the dirt work out for the skate park, that piece is one that we'll do, you know, aside from what the skate park group is actually doing for design and construction. So, it'll be just the pad and getting it prepped and ready by a contractor that we'll still be needing to put out a bid for.
Ryan, when do you see that happening, taking those bids?
I believe Chris Iker, who's our Parks Director, has reached out to a few contractors. We believe that the pad would be under the $50,000 threshold, so we'll need three quotes. So, hopefully sooner. I know a lot of contractors are busy right now and trying to get quotes is what we're working on.
I was gonna say, because we had the 90-day thing in there, so we need to make sure it happens before that 90 days.
Dirt work has to begin before the 90 days.
If I can, real quick, I spoke with Yon and Canton with SPA, and right now they're working on the specs for the dirt work, for the pad work, and we should have that by early next week. And I've got a couple of dirt contractors coming early next week also to look at it.
Awesome, thanks, Chris.
Are we having the base delivered directly to the site? Or are we gonna have to haul it in our small truck?
We'll have to haul it. We had it delivered to the Public Works Yard, our Streets Department, so that's where we have it staged currently.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one? Feel free to interrupt me anytime, ask questions that you need to ask. Turner Field Lighting, this is one that we actually met on-site with a contractor to get an idea of kind of where it stands. So, again, Chris Iker, our Parks Director, and I met out there. Wayne Sanders from our Electric Department met, and we looked at kind of the site with one of the contractors, a contractor that's actually works for the company that provides the lighting, so they can give us some sort of idea. We're just trying to get ballpark numbers right now on what are we really looking at for lighting Turner Field and removing all the overhead electric and bringing it underground. So, there's, you know, some cost to that. Most of that would have to be done with contractors. You know, we won't be able to do any of that work in-house. The Ridge Street to Walnut Street and Fifth Street to Ninth Street rebuild projects over by the middle school. This one's basically, I'm working on putting together kind of a general approach as far as design and scoping it right now so that I can hand it off to our engineer to start working on getting this proposal together and getting plans started working. So, that one's still fairly early, and that one's really inclusive of rebuilding the roads, including curb and gutter, changing the elevations over there. We have a lot of low spots in areas around the middle school and improving that. I think probably the most difficult piece will be how we phase this and working when school's not in, and what roads, and how we detour folks so that there's still access to the school when that project comes about, so something to keep in mind.
So, on that one, because, I mean, prior, I worked over there when it was the high school. I mean, and the flooding is insane if it rains, so that's part of the redo is working with all that drainage?
Part of it will be that. The difficult thing over there, and again, that needs to be engineered, but a lot of that, or all of it, is surface drain. I think there's a few curb inlets that are text dots as you get closer to Key that take a lot of that water away, but there's no other underground storm drain, you know, kind of within that area. So, all those things during the design would be taken into account, and depending on how that design is, you know, where the water goes, but it would be looking at that exact thing because of the water that sits there. You can see some of the roads have already started failing, so.
In years past, we shot grades on it, and it's just flat. There's no place for it to go. We put underground drainage, and it's sick, and took it partially down, I believe, to an inlet there off, that was a block off of Key Avenue.
Right, yeah. It was off of Key.
And I don't know if we can tie into any of that or not, but it's awful flat. It's gonna be hard to move any of that out of there.
Yeah, it's gonna be difficult without taking it underground.
That's the problem with the asphalt coming up.
Right.
When you have water standing.
They have a lot of alligator cracking over in those areas where the water just sits on the pavement, so, you know, damages the base underneath. Any other questions on that one? US 281 text dot widening, so that one, we actually have, I think, 90% design set from text dot. Currently, our engineers reviewing that. We have some utility relocates that we'll need to do through a contractor, both electric and water. Right there at Naruna, this project is basically taking the piece that goes over the bridge where you continue on, if you're coming on 281, you go over the bridge, that piece will now curve and tie in. I guess that would be more to the east. So, it would take that straight, you know, traffic volume and make sure it's keeping them on 281, so that'll be the intent of the project. They're widening that, putting in some sidewalk and some ADA accessibility, and so, they, we've been working with them on right-of-way and city.
I do have a question on that, because one of the things, because I do know that we're having a change where you enter the Hostess House area in Hancock. We're gonna keep those pillars, those rock pillars that are there, that are historical, and they're the old entrances to the Park Hotel, right? They stay? Okay, just making sure.
And I believe those are outside. Those are actually, I think, on our property and not in text dots right-of-way, but they're not touching that area.
Okay, good.
What is the funding source? Is that, does the city participate in that, or is that all a text dot funding?
The widening is actually all text dots funding. The relocation would be the city's cost for relocating our infrastructure since it's in their right-of-way.
Okay. There are just a couple of other, any right-of-way that they acquire for this, we would have a 10% cost share. So, for example, when we talk to you about the Naruna 281 intersection and the need to widen that, we had about a 10% stake in that acquisition. At the same time, the right-of-way that we'll be talking about later tonight, that city property that they're acquiring will get a compensation for that in return, so that part of it should be close to a wash.
I got you, okay.
All right. The upper pressure plane study has been completed, so next phases we'll be working on design. So, that's where that one actually sits currently. We've, I think we've discussed that one prior in detail, but basically, the upper pressure plane is connecting old Georgetown tank area, proposing it to go around the, basically, the south part of town, come back up off of 580. So, that's, you know, to make those tie-ins and to make that loop so that those folks on higher elevation still have good water pressure and, you know, for future subdivisions.
One of the things we were waiting on was to see what kind of flows we could get, but it doesn't look like it's gonna rain anytime soon.
Right.
We may want to go ahead and just wrap that up based on history.
Right, for the infiltration and.
Based on history.
And that will alleviate the excess water going out on a weekly basis, is that right?
That'll be helpful. Loop systems is always going to assist in moving the water and eliminating those dead-end lines, so you'd eliminate flushing. I don't, do we have any water guys here?
No, that's.
It will be helpful, yes.
Right. Yeah, there'll still be some dead-end areas, but it will take care of most of those, so you don't have all the flushing. And the one that Councilman Clark had just mentioned, the infiltration project, so we had discussed this prior as far as the smoke testing and monitoring. We hadn't had, we had a really good rain. We got everything at once in about an hour's timeframe there, so, but we haven't started that project. We were kind of looking at that, and as far as funding goes, we were hoping that we could leverage our state buy board contracts for doing some of that work that's already procured. We did look through that and kind of vet that option. Some of the items we needed were not in there, and so, we're, that's gonna be a project that we'll have to go out for bid to get a contractor on, so that's where that one sits currently. The generation backup, which is our water wastewater facility, we have one pump station , Spring Street, as well as the office area there, water wastewater, and the animal shelter to try to get all those facilities on a backup generation. That one, we actually just let for, we put it out for bids and opened bids a few weeks ago. There was a few items brought up on two of the generators, so we've had contractors coming to the facilities to look at everything so that they can, before we close the bids, you know, put their estimate in, or at least their bid in, and be as accurate as possible. So, two of the generators from one contractor was brought up that we may need to look at the sizing of those, so we've kind of pulled back, and we're looking at sizing for one of those facilities. I think originally, it was designed more of a emergency scenario, not long-term emergency, so not for 24, 48 hours. I think the original quote was for a few hours running a minimalistic, you know, maybe one pump. And so, we went ahead and closed the bids on that for now so that we can go ahead and have our engineers take a look at that and make sure before we, we would hate to get down the road, purchase generators, and we want to make sure that they're gonna be sized accordingly for the time we really need them. The other ones were fine, but the contractor did bring up those two that we might need to look at that, so we wanted to make sure we get that done. And then, it'll go back out for bids. The electric SCADA system, which we'll talk about a little bit later tonight, is the interconnectivity between Naruna substation, the mainland Lampasses substation, and some of our other, I guess, connected, not actual substations, but some of our other areas where we communicate. That project will be brought for tonight. It's the proposal currently to let the contractor build out this system, which is gonna be five cell modems, so it's really a communication system, their software that lives in the cloud, and so we'll, you know, be working through that to get this one stood up.
So, Ryan, it looks like you've got the year 23 on that one. If we're, is it going to take that long to implement that?
I don't believe so. I think, I think we would finish, it would be the next fiscal year. I don't think we'll be able to get it done before.
Not in 2022?
September. I don't know if we will. I know some of the components, talking with Schneider Engineering, some of those may be a little bit delayed. I think the push is gonna be to try to finish it this year if we can, the proposal goes. But if not, it would be probably just into the next fiscal year, maybe October, November timeframe.
Okay, thanks.
The Avenue C CDB sewer project is well underway, so we've been communicating that out to the public. That's our sewer project, and it's basically upgrading everything on Avenue C. There's a lot of tie-ins to existing homes that we're having to make, and so, we're, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're communicating with folks on that, and we're always trying to improve that, you know, with the open cuts that are out there, you know, working with citizens to try to either keep those, water truck on those, to try to cut down some of that dust. We had that rain, rainfall, week and a half ago, and so they've had to go back in and repair a lot of the ditches because they were temporarily left open until we can come back, finish the ties, and then we'll pave all the cut areas and tie back in. But that project is, I think, on, I believe it's currently on track. I don't think they're behind on that. They have hit a little bit of rock. The Campbell Park Pavilion has been completed, so that one is now done. The Brook and the 580 parking lot repaving is in the scoping phase, so that's one that we've actually talked to Chris Iker, our Parks Director, and it needs to be repaved. We were hoping we could do some maintenance in areas where we need to prep it, but then it would be repaving those parking lots.
Is that not something the Seal Coat can take care of?
The Seal Coat, at 580, Seal Coat might be an option. I believe Brook Park is in need of a full asphalt rehabilitation where we would, you know, remove what's there. It's in pretty rough shape, Brook Park. 580 could be done with possible Seal Coat or Fog Seal or something, you know, kind of in those terms, a lesser project. The Pole Barn is, I know when I was out there last week, maybe midweek, I know the foundation or the peers are in for the structure, so it's moving along pretty well. I don't think, I think that one will be done fairly quick. Wayfinding project, that's one that Becky has really been working on. We've been kind of working together and have teamed up on that one. Right now, it's in the prelim- Right now, it's in the preliminary design phase, so we've looked at um various type of wayfinding signs across uh, kind of across Texas and in other cities, um and kinda looked at, you know, what we think's feasible for Lampasses. Again, kind of a phased approach, doing uh some of the critical signs to, to direct folks where they need to be or give folks an idea of, of what Lampasses has to offer, so.
So is the phased approach the reason that you have it marked out for twenty-twenty-four? Because we need some signage bef, well before that.
Right. So the reason it's set to twenty-twenty-four is we're gonna have to uh consult most likely with a sign design company to come up with how the sign's gonna look and what types of signs we go with. Obviously, there'll be a lot of feedback from council and, and that would be a determination made by council on, on how they wanna move forward and, and what types of signs we're really looking for. There's such a wide range, so.
You don't think it could be done like within by twenty-twenty-three? Because that was one of the first things that we were gonna look at that was relatively good and I think we need to get it implemented a little bit faster than by twenty-twenty-four.
I kind of agree with Kathy on that. We, we've talked about that for a long time to kick that down the road to twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
I'd like to see it moved up myself, because I think that's important.
Same.
Right. Yeah, we're working on a lot of that already, so we can see if we can expedite it. I think some of the things that we've run into lately with some of the consultants and engineering firms, they're all so busy. It's like everybody else, the workload, trying to get stuff in, you know, sometimes takes a little while, but we may have good luck with, with whoever we go with. Um and then the Calvert Building Basement Rehab, uh still in the scoping phase of that and, and kinda what that, what we want that to look like and what we want it to be used for, so there's some things there. Um but it's still early phase. There's not any dedicated funding yet. Uh I believe that one is FY twenty-four, and I put that one out FY twenty-four because it depends on how many reiter, you know, reiterations we go through on, you know, what changes and what we wanna see there. And then the Hostess House Rehab, the design um is actually finalized. Um we're hoping to go back and open bids, well, um probably first part of the year to have that out, out for bid and, and uh have a contractor onboard for the Hostess House Rehab.
Do you have plans for that one? I, I haven't seen any. Have you guys seen any plans?
We, we had some preliminary plans. I don't know if we've gotten the, I think we do have the final, close to final.
Councilmember Pierce, you may have been absent from the meeting that uh where we distributed the updated timeline with the uh scope of that, so we should, we should, I believe the timeline called for two different reviews of plans. I don't know if it's ninety and ninety-five percent, but that'll happen in August, September. Uh that will be inclusive of this structural, because we'll bid both of them at the same time, probably at the end of September according to the updated timeline. And I can, I can get you the information we had at the meeting.
Okay.
So y'all have that.
That was the last one I had on my list. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Comments, anybody? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item up is discussion regarding the community garden rainwater collection system. Ms. Crozier.
I'm almost embarrassed to talk to y'all about rainwater collection at this point in time. Uh it's more of a prayer than it is a reality. However, we have been working for a long time and we talked about uh revisiting the rainwater collection once the pavilion was completed. It's now completed. It has downspouts coming down and as we saw, some of us have seen, when we had the great rain, we had a mess out there and all that water. We had three point seven five inches at our home, which is downtown here. Uh it was very hard to, to feel that all that water had gone to waste and uh we're asking now for you to consider again a rainwater collection system at the pavilion to be uh brought into the community garden for our use. Chris Iker came to me and said he had found a rainwater collection system that was well under the proposed twelve thousand dollar range that was uh brought up in our last meeting. And uh I wrote a grant for it back in February uh for ten thousand dollars. It will be awarded in August and I'm asking you uh again to take a look at it. Uh Chris has, has uh the quote and pictures of it so y'all can see it. It meets more of what aesthetically, which we had um had some issues over. It is a stainless steel tank, uh and he can give you more of the details so that you can take a look at it. I personally think it'll be very, very appealing. It will um, it will give the community something to look at for their own personal use and I.
But the grant, the, the, you won't know if you've got the grant until August, is that correct?
That's right.
So of the grant, how many sources do you have? The one source for the grant?
Actually, a couple of sources for that, out, outside of that grant and donations.
And how many are buying for the grant, do you know?
Uh I don't know. They gave us a grant last year um for twenty-five hundred dollars. It was a, it was to get us started. We're in our second year now. Uh they're very fond of us. They uh follow us and have promoted us on their websites as well, so I feel very confident that that will be awarded.
Is the uh, the collection system, is it gonna have a, I mean, you said it's gonna be nice for the community to look at.
Mm-hmm.
Um is it gonna have a function other than just looking at it? Is it gonna be?
It's coming into our garden.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yes.
So you're gonna use this water to, to do the community gardens?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Um I wanna tell you about some other things that we have on the, in the works um right now and I'm getting quotes for, is that we have a setup for um the handicap. Uh I've talked to a couple of uh concrete contractors who are well acquainted with ADA uh requirements and that we have mapped out where we're going to put the garden, the concrete, so that we can set up uh raised beds that will accommodate wheelchairs as well as those who cannot bend over. Um and we're looking at providing three or four separate uh garden spaces for them. And um I'm going to work with the LCR A grant to provide for that as well and, and I have two other sources that are uh have indicated that they wanna contribute on this. So just waiting on you guys.
So the city would only be on the hook for a couple of thousand bucks, is that, is that what you're saying?
If you do two of the, the water collections, um like originally was planned, there was two water collections that were um talked about.
So it's twelve thousand dollars apiece, not for both of them?
Well, ours is much less than that.
Chris, do you mind coming up?
Can we get the numbers on here?
Do you mind sharing the numbers that you have on the current?
Sure. So the, the tank that was proposed, proposed to us by Pinnacle Water Tanks in Marble Falls is a six thousand four hundred sixty-four gallon tank. It's eleven feet tall. It's all corrugated metal outside, so it looks really nice or it would look really nice in the park. It's got a thirty mil liner on the inside. It's seventy-eight hundred and six dollars for person, purchase and install, but I didn't wanna submit that to y'all until she finds out whether or not she's gonna have this grant.
How many gallons did you say that was?
Six thousand four hundred and sixty-four.
That's for one, that's for one, one tank.
That's one tank. But I think that one tank would be sufficient, because we only wanna catch the water off the south side of that pavilion.
Okay, so not two tanks?
Just one.
Okay.
And then, and this is kinda more informative right now pending what happens with the grant in August.
Correct.
Okay.
Randy?
Uh Finley, is, is there some way that we can work with her in regards to possibly a reimbursement or maybe that grant could be used, uh something that we could move on with this, getting it in place? That's a pretty inexpensive price.
I, I don't know what the conditions of the grant are. Sometimes the grant will not reimburse you once you've already purchased uh whatever piece of equipment that you applied for the grant for, so we would just have to like, look at the conditions of the grant, I think, first and foremost.
Is there any way that you can look into that and maybe put it on the next agenda?
I could certainly, I'd probably ask uh Mr. Iker to do that.
Okay.
Also, Chris, do you know how long that bid is good for?
Yeah, thirty days.
And so August is past that thirty-day point?
It will be, yes, but he said it will, they could probably honor it. This is a second quote. I got this same quote last year, it was seventy-two hundred, so it's gone up six hundred dollars in a year.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
This is the grant that I wrote. You can have a copy of it. Any other comments? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Janet, for your hard work.
Next item is discussion regarding the Hannah Spring well at Campbell Park. I'm sorry, it's the Hannah Spring wall.
Mayor and Council, I, I have the feeling that I will start this off, but I may not be the last word on the, at the dais, but uh the agenda item that we prepared for you is primarily uh focused on a response to an inquiry from uh the mayor as well as Mr. Kabinus from the Heritage Foundation in terms of exploring different options for uh getting this work done and the work being uh the lowering of that wall uh to uh previous uh, previous levels. Uh there were a number of different scenarios that were, I think, discussed with the mayor and of course, the staff was not privy to those discussions, we're just, we're getting them through the mayor, but uh I've enumerated those in the summary page, but they had some um, all of them had something to do with a way to convey risk, convey the costs, uh have the project administered by a third party, et cetera. Uh we did follow up with the city attorney and uh generally, she advised that in all cases, the city would still assume both civil and possibly uh criminal exposure were we to do this. And criminally, because you cannot circumvent the pro, state procurement laws on a, on a city project. Regardless of who administers and procures the work, you would still have to follow the state procurement laws, uh as well as you have to ultimately be, know that that is a historical asset and uh any damage that is done to it by someone that is either not insured, not bonded, does poor workmanship, would fall back on the city. Um out of the uh desire to limit legal expense, staff did not ask for written comment, however, be glad to get documentation from J.C. uh at council's request. I, I kind of, I, I quickly summarize that, Mayor. The other thing I want to point out is uh at, at the last meeting, and I know we had several of you absent, in, in my staff report, uh I had a section that said, this doesn't mean that you cannot do this project. What it simply means is if you do it, you have to follow law. You have to make sure that you, your contractor is qualified, bonded, insured, uh but it doesn't certainly, I'm not suggesting that don't do it, it just, if you do it, you've gotta do it according to uh state law and local uh policy.
And I would just like to add, before we ask anyone else to speak, that I believe all of council is aware of our asset over there. We all want to protect it as best we can. We all want the best for the park and it is the citizens' park and we do want to do it upright. The problem has been, before any of you judge what we've come to say, is that to do it upright will cost a lot of money. We're taking the citizens' money very seriously here and we would all like to see this project done. We, we want it done right and we want it done properly. So just bear that in mind, anything that comes up, we do have some council people that wanna speak and so I'm going to turn it over to whichever. Mr. Morris?
So, and then we talked a little bit about this and from talking to a few folks in the community and whatnot, um you know, personally, I see the asset there as well historically and I mean, when it comes down to tourism for our town and preserving the history of this town. And what I was hoping for potentially is, could we look at taking that wall down, still having the fence up? You know, I think it'd be a really neat attraction for people to be able to come in and actually utilize that water, be able to get in it. Uh you know, historically, we talk about maybe the healing purposes that came from that water. But is there any way that we can look at taking down that wall and with some of the runoff, having some smaller pools that we don't have to staff like lifeguards or anyone else out there, but where people could actually take some water or go down there, put their feet in, sit around in it and also highlight our already beautiful park over there with being able to see these springs? I'd be interested in that.
So I believe Heritage Foundation, I don't know if anyone's here from there, uh they originally, they originally had offered to put those pools in with donations and I don't know where we stand with that, so.
Could I, could I ask one question as well?
Would you like to tell us that, Mr. Fish?
Could, could I ask one question, Mayor?
Sure.
Has a.
Wait, one second, sir. Come on up, Ms. Boltinghouse. Yes, please.
Sure.
Go ahead, Randy.
I, I just wanna, did, did, refresh my memory, did we have a structural engineer look at that?
We did.
We did? Do we have a report on that?
I think that was also.
Some time ago. Some time ago. Go ahead, Ms. Boltinghouse.
May I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for having us this evening and listening and bringing this up again for discussion in whatever way it is. I'm Sherri Boltinghouse. I'm a member of the Lampasses Historical Commission. There's a very important difference that is mis, misrepresented here. The Heritage Foundation is another volunteer organization. The Lampasses Historical Commission is a different group of people.
Right.
Uh I serve both hats as a museum member and a, a board member and a historical commission. The red shirts and some others tonight are historical commission group. The Heritage Foundation did indeed volunteers come out and clean up that area one time. They diligently cleaned it up, it was very nice and done. But the efforts recently have been historical commission, not the Heritage Foundation and so.
The historical commission has.
I think you misspoke a moment ago, you called it heritage again. It's not the heritage, it's historical foundation.
So the historical foundation has cleaned the pool?
No, Ha- Heritage cleaned the pool.
Okay.
But the historical foundation is the one trying to encourage you to work on the wall in historically more correct way. It's the historical commission. And I wanna clarify that.
Yes, we under, we understand that.
So the wording of heritage needs to be not, that's not part of this group and what I'm presenting tonight.
Except that the Heritage Foundation has presented a lot to us over the past few months.
Mr. Kabinus is not speaking for the heritage.
You're right, you're right.
He's speaking for historical.
The Heritage Foundation is a valid organization and they're.
Yes.
They're here.
But most recently, it's been a historical commission representative that's been.
Just asking for stuff, yes.
Yes.
Okay, we understand that.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because.
Right.
We keep hearing the other organization's name rather than ours.
Uh, sorry about that, I'm sure.
I'm, you know, helping a little bit correct it and.
We do understand who's who, yeah.
Okay. Uh what, what we're asking you tonight is to consider going back to the wall and discussion of it and continuing with the progress towards historically reinstating it with the lowered wall. Uh we understand the expense that's involved and everything is costing more these days. One way to lower some of that expense and go back to more historically correct would be instead of a flagstone cap, which I understand is about seventeen thousand dollars part of the bid, a concrete cap is more historically correct. That would be more appropriate and save some money for the city to do that. We understand that the legal aspects of things and we respect that fully. We're just wanting to do anything we can, as Lampasses Historical Commission, to support the city in doing this. Uh the eighteen seventies wall, we have pictures of it and how low it was and how accessible it was. And what Mr. Morris is saying might be something in the future to consider, but the, lower the wall with a concrete top on it rather than capstone would lower the cost of some of that. concrete top on it rather than capstone would lower the cost of some of that. We're trying to celebrate our springs, as we all know. And I was over there this afternoon before I came over to the meeting, and it could be so much better. And so, I'm hoping that that's where we're going with this. There may be some others that need to add some information. Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question? So, lower the wall, is that all the way down to the ground?
Well, it's lowering it to the level that the photographs that we have presented in the past, and can present again, would show you how low that wall was. But it was viewable, you could walk up to it, and if there's a perimeter of a fence, which we understand for safety reasons.
We, we've all seen that, thank you, though. Chris could maybe shed some light on why the, that it's up as high as it is, as far as flooding goes, Chris, if you will.
Correct. That's, in a big rain event, if we had that thing down ground level, that spring would get full of water. Right now, as it is, it backs up. The last rain we had, the three and a half inch rain we had, rose that thing about fourteen inches, so, just, and I would suggest not taking that wall down to ground level. If we're going to take it down at all, I would say ten to twelve inches above ground level, for safety reasons, and things don't wash into the spring every time it rains. And to answer your question, Randy, yes, we did get that assessment back from the structural engineer, and basically, his assessment was, the wall that's underground right now is dry stacked limestone rock. There's no mortar in it at all. So, and the reason we engaged them is because they, we were, at one point, we were talking about attaching the fence to that rock wall, and we wanted to make sure that the rock wall had the structural integrity to support that if we were to do it. And it, basically, it does not. They, they did not recommend attaching anything to the wall. In fact, his recommendation was, don't disturb the wall, but, I mean-
So, Chris, the, the range of bids that we got, when you first set it out, was anywhere from seventy-five thousand to a hundred and something?
A hundred and five, yes.
Hundred and five. And to satisfy Ms. Boltinghouse's inquiry about the concrete, which did those bids referred back to for the capstone?
So, the concrete cap was about, and again, this was when we were going to attach the fence to the wall, so we felt like we needed eleven to twelve inches of concrete to support that fence, not wall. I think the concrete cap was about nine thousand dollars, and she's right, the limestone cap is about seventeen thousand dollars, so it did go up in price.
So, have we, which one do we have in either of those bids? Are they both concrete?
We got them both.
We've got both, so we can make a choice, one way or the other. Okay.
One of the things that I think would be, with the wall, historically correct wall, would be it's about eighteen inches above the water level, if I'm understanding correctly what I've learned. So, that's the thought we had, was restore it to that eighteen inches above the water level, which is historically, I believe, what the, what the pictures show us.
You mean above ground level?
Well, yes.
Because the water level goes up and down, right? So, you mean like the eighteen inches above ground level?
Eighteen inches, and he was talking about it went up fourteen inches.
So, so it, fourteen inches from the top, or fourteen inches from where it is?
Chris, would that suffice, eighteen inches, would that suffice for keeping things from coming in?
Yeah, if you did eighteen inches above, above ground, would that keep all the trash and stuff from washing into those springs? In theory.
And finish to my question, in regards to the structural engineer. If you do the concrete cap, would you put the fence on top of it, or would you put it out where-
Absolutely not. No way.
Put it out where we talked about doing it?
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up, because the fence will be here Wednesday, so I'm going to need some direction on the fence, too, because the last word I had was when the fence gets here.
Obviously, my biggest concern, and has been since day one, is I don't want to be sitting up here making a decision without structural information, to be able to guarantee that that thing's not going to fall down. I don't want it to cave in, obviously, while we're sitting up here.
Right.
So, I don't want to do anything that, that's not legal, that's not structurally sufficient to do it.
So, it would seem that the only question we have, if I can just summarize it, is whether we're going to do it with just a fence, or if we're willing to spend between seventy-five to a hundred and five thousand to do it. And I'm sorry to cut that short, but it seems like we've been over this several times before.
Well, one of the questions I have is, if all of our other bids had to do with that flagstone, is that like part of the bid that we could just take out of that, or would we have to go back to the bid process and say, "This is exactly what we want now", and like, start from scratch? I mean, how does that work?
I could bring them contractors back out to reassess it, but we have both sets. It needs a cap of some sort, it has to be concrete or limestone, either one. I just thought the limestone would be more decorative and look better in the park, if that's our goal, to make it look better.
What about the idea of, like, any of the, any of the water that's coming out of the springs, like, any kind of pool down there, or smaller pools or anything?
And again, that was Mr. Fish.
We, we've looked into that a few times, and I've, I've had our TML rep come out and look at it. I've got their recommendations on that as well, but I don't want to speak to that. I'd like to go back to that paperwork and make sure-
Ms. Boltinghouse, what, what do you think about that?
That was not their proposal.
I, I know, but I just wanted to check with the historical commission.
I think that might be something to look at down the way. At this time, I understand we're talking about the wall, but have some waiting pools or something later on. Something I want to encourage you to consider is, before you put any fence up, you need to, I would think you need to determine what you're going to do with the wall, rather than put up a fence and then have to work within the confines of that fence.
Yeah, I don't think it would work that way.
Determine what's going to happen to the wall first, and by understanding that, and then later, address the fence.
Can I just say one thing? Chris mentioned the floodwaters. During the, during the last flood, I went out while it was still raining, toward the end of it, and you could see the high water mark, and it rained, in our house, four inches in less than two hours, so a pretty good rain. And the floodwater, the high mark, was about two feet below the current top of the lower wall, which would be higher after you put the cap on it. But the interesting thing was, the water inside the springs, the high water mark, was the same. Because when the floodwater reached above the outlet, it reversed flow, and the floodwater washed into the springs. So, it filled up with floodwater and debris, and it was kind of nasty on the inside. And I didn't realize it would do that, but it did. So, floodwater already gets in there, but the floodwater was going down really quickly, because the heaviest of the rain had stopped. And then I went up back out the next morning, and the spring had already cleaned itself out. The floodwater had dropped below the outlet, so the new water coming in, it cleaned out the spring again. So, the wall will be, doesn't, the wall doesn't keep out floodwater, so that's not a reason to keep it there. Floodwater gets in already. And the other, with respect to the, what we would, what we would suggest is reopening the bids, because I want to get Ron Ishi, who's a local stone-
Yeah, he wouldn't do it.
He wouldn't do it? Okay, well, and then there was a contractor-
We can take care of the bids, and if you have someone that could throw a bid out there, you should encourage them to make a bid.
Yeah, no, I will, and I, there are several, there are several contractors I know about that-
They need to go through the process with the city.
One of them gave me an informal bid of sixty-four thousand.
But why don't we get formal bids from them, rather than talking about it hypothetically in here?
Okay, no, I, I, I just want to make sure that the city would entertain those, if we would reopen-
The city's going to entertain any bids-
Okay.
When they put out bids.
I, I will, I will start working on that tomorrow, of getting new bids, if the city would do it. But what we, what we don't want is for the, for the, the fence to be set in concrete right around the wall.
We understand that, we've heard this three or four times now, and I think we're, we're trying to go, go through the request right now.
I just wanted to clarify.
But we need to move on to the next thing, too, because we need, also need to hear from Mr. Fish, I believe.
Okay. Okay.
Was, was the bid for the fencing included installation, right?
I'm sorry?
The bid for the fencing included installation, right?
Uh, no, we paid a little over fifteen thousand dollars for the fencing, and the installation's eighty-five hundred.
Do we have a proper place to store it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you both. I did want to ask Mr. Fish, did he leave?
Thank you.
Thank you, boys. I think he's gone. Does council have enough information from everyone to make a decision, if and when we decide to make a decision? You got enough?
Mayor, I might just make one comment.
Sure.
Where these bids have been in excess of fifty thousand dollars, it is really more appropriate to require sealed bid proposals and, and rebid this. That way, if Mr. Kabinus wants to encourage somebody to apply under that process, we should do that. But unfortunately, I think with the bids coming in at the level they did, and the way that they were advertised, I think, I think it's more appropriate that we go ahead and say, "Okay, we're going to do the sealed bid proposal, we're going to start over." It doesn't necessarily mean that it has to take six months, we can move fairly quickly on this. But with that, Yvonne, is that your?
I think we just follow the purchasing policy.
Yes, sir.
So, are we proposing to go ahead and redo the sealed bids without the limestone cap, so that we have a, as, another starting point?
We, we would develop that scope and either include the concrete solely, or use the others as, as an alternate. But based on the input we received tonight, I don't know that it would be necessary to even offer the alternate.
So, can we put this on as an action item, maybe next, next meeting?
I think what we'll do is, we'll develop a scope here shortly. You think we can do that in the next week, Ryan? And if we want to go ahead and put that out, the only thing we would want to make sure we include in that scope is the bonding requirements at the certain levels of the bid, of the job. And, you know, I, I would feel comfortable advertising for bid without bringing it back and asking you for advertising, because ultimately, you will either say thumbs of, thumbs up or thumbs down when it comes time to spend money, so.
I would say go, just go do that.
Uh, so we can go ahead and get that, without objection.
I would ask one thing, that the historical, someone from the historical committee, at least look at it before you go out for bids.
Certainly.
Any other comments, questions?
Can I ask a question? I, I would kind of like to hear from, from somebody that's an old timer, that's been around here, what these springs actually mean to you, and what they should mean to our community, and, and what it's like going forward.
Judge Boltinghouse, I see you're getting up. And are you willing to be called an old timer?
Well, that's kind of what I wanted to object to, but I guess tonight it'll be all right. To me, these springs, well now, when you know it, you can't talk. These springs, to me, mean a place for people to come see. Some of them are viewing only, others to swim in. This one over here, Hannah Springs, is the one we have concerned about. It would be a, a good selling point, and has been, for the city of Lampaces. You see the shirt I'm wearing? Talks about let freedom spring. We just finished celebrating Spring Ho, which is talking about the springs, not the season of the year. Thank you, sir. And also, I saw, they're not called banners, but I can't think of what these little banners are on the downtown street posts. It said, "Celebrate the springs." So, that's some more of what this is all about. So, being here over the years, I've swam in the other pool quite a few times when I was a kid, sometimes legal, sometimes not, but anyway, that's what it means to me, is to have something that would be an enticement for people outside town to come see. One comment is, when the day tripper came to Lampaces for his little program, he said, "My favorite thing about Lampaces is the beautiful, crystal clear water in Hannah Springs." So, he actually got to go over there and, and look in there, because that wire fence wasn't up at that time. So, that's what it means to me, is historical significance.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I would like to thank all of you who've taken interest in this, that, thank you for coming out tonight to show your support. Also, like to thank the council for their diligence in trying to resolve the issue. Yes, sir?
So, for clarification on my side, when the fence gets here Wednesday, store it.
Store it. Thank you. Anything else? Well, next item is discussion regarding fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget update.
I can't believe all these folks are going to be leaving when we're going to be talking about budget.
I think they, I think they think it's going to be boring.
I might start with the, the summary first. You know, sometimes I ask you, "Do you want me to just go to the last page, and, and we can start there?" But, two meetings ago, I gave you a rollout, and part of that rollout included some of our goals in terms of budget preparation. And it's, you know, one of them was to bring you a balanced budget, but also bring you a budget that had options for your priorities, and, and different ways to, to fund projects or capital items. The last thing we want to do is bring you four or five hundred thousand dollars, when your options include, okay, what do we cut to get to balance? We want to make sure it's kind of the opposite, and, and provide you with a means to fund some of your priorities. What we're going to talk about, and this is, this used to be my favorite picture of all the pictures I ever had, and everybody knows what this is, right? That's Avenue E before our, well, I just sprinkled a few pictures throughout, but- My own Monica? There we go. So, what, and I'll try to be fairly efficient with this, but what we're going to do tonight is basically talk to you about current status, our projected year end, and kind of where we at, where we're at with that. We also want to provide you input on what's included in the budget, as you see it now, and what is not included in the budget. We'll, we'll review the operating budget, I mean, that's the goal. We want to, we want to pass a budget that is inclusive of all of our operating funds, but our ability to use and see those resources and some of those non-operating funds are probably just as important when we start talking about a Hannah Spring wall, or some additional pipe in the ground, how we can, can leverage some of those non-operating fund balances. We, we also, there are a couple of areas that I think is worthy of council consideration, in terms of telling staff to get more information. One is water and wastewater, we're seeing a deficit in that fund. And the other thing that we're not seeing a deficit in the fund, at, at least in the initial stages, but that we've, we've kind of have some ongoing concern, is, is noted in today's text, and et cetera, that I sent out to you, is, you know, what's happening in the ERCOT market, and how are they becoming more reliable? And of course, reliability costs money, and so, how does that translate into wholesale versus retail costs? And then probably most importantly as well, is we want to, we want to reinforce that, this is your budget. We get it to a point, we deliver it to you, but we want to make sure that you don't feel like you're rubber stamping anything. We want to make sure, if you have input, if you have items that you want to put on the table, that you have the opportunity and, and the encouragement to do so. So, staff isn't just giving you something that's canned, we're giving you, I think, a pretty darn good starting point, and that's really our goal. And then also, also, we want to take a look at some dates and times for additional workshops, topics, and departmental presentations. I do want to thank staff, they, they've done a, they've done a hell of a good job, to this point, getting everything together. Ryan, Yvonne, all of our department heads, who we met with kind of nonstop last week, to take a look and kind of surgically look at their, their different department budgets. So, I, I do appreciate them, and want to acknowledge that to council as well. What have we done to date? I think it kind of kicked off, maybe even before the CIP, but CIP report, year-end projections, staff did that. One of the things that I want to, again, this is a disclaimer, on our year-end projections, we got to a point on that, then we also did some compensation adjustments. Yvonne asked me, "Do you want me to go back and do-" adjustments. Yvonne asked me, do you want me to go back and do those compensation adjustments into the year end projections? We knew we had enough to more than cover the compensation and we were focused pretty, pretty narrowly on the budget. You know, what are we doing next year? So I told her, hold off on that. Let's get the budget taken care of. We can come back and fine tune and you'll have a recommendation from me later. We have typically used some of that, if we have seen a year end surplus, we've used that to what we, to do what we call accelerated purchase. Hey, can we go ahead and pick up a police car now that we're going to have to buy next year's budget anyway? And that way it opens up a little more budget latitude for council. We, staff submitted their preliminary budgets June 15th. Yvonne turned those around, input of those, turned those around to us June 22nd. We did receive confirmation of health costs, which is an agenda item for tonight on July 1. And then, like I said, the meeting, the week of July 3rd, we met kind of nonstop with department heads on their individual budget. And this is a line by line review. It's, sometimes it doesn't take an hour, it takes 30 minutes, but you're hitting every line within that budget. And we've made initial budget modifications for this evening. Those budget modifications, by the way, are not in the computer yet. We are still scrubbing by hand and so it'll take us a little more time to really formalize a presentation. Just as a reminder, when we talk about our operating budget, what we actually operate for, what we actually budget for, it is, it is those items. We've got about, I believe, six different funds, 29 different separate departmental budgets that we prepare. Two major differences, one is general fund and then the other are proprietary or enterprise funds, electric, utilities, airport, golf, animal shelter. We will talk tonight a little bit about non-operating funds. And the reason we're talking about those during the budget process is because council needs to see those as a resource. If there's money sitting in a Key Avenue fund from 2011 or 2006, council should consider that a resource that may be available for other priorities. So where we are, and again, this is the only, this is the only budget number slide that you'll see tonight, but our general fund is about 364 to the good, electric fund about 255, water wastewater is about 367 negative. So your total of all of your operating funds is about a $251,000 positive.
Finley, could you go over some of those negative things that are in the water wastewater?
Yeah, I think, I think there are three things that I would point to. One, one is the increased cost of the water rights reservation that we have discussed over the year when we renewed and kept an additional 3,000 acre feet of water with BRA. That's one of those costs. The other cost. I'm trying to think what else it was. It's a BRA, I've got it written down. Oh, it's also increased debt load because a lot of our recent improvements have been water wastewater related, increased cost of BRA water reservation. And I think the one thing that we see in water wastewater, probably as much or more so than any other department, is the increased cost of supplies, chemicals, chemical and botanical that we're utilizing in that plant.
Thank you.
I think, I think our, I think our revenue is probably pretty conservatively budgeted. I mean, if we hadn't fine tuned it a little bit, we might push revenue up a little bit. But where we're seeing some of the bigger differences is on the expense side. Would that be your? So some of the just preliminary notes, and I think these are generally all positive in terms of how they've been incorporated, but we have maintained the same level of operation and maintenance. So we haven't cut anything from trimming trees or building and grounds expense or technology expense. So all of those paving has stayed the same level. So we haven't gone through and tried to make adjustments at the, at the expense of operations and maintenance. We have, we did budget for a slight increase in employee health coverage and we're, I'm pleased to say that at least our, what we had budgeted, not knowing what our renewal rate would be, will cover the renewal rate. And Yvonne will go over that a little bit later in the, in the meeting. We did budget for increases in fuel and diesel. We assume continued growth in sales and ad valorem taxes. However, it is not to the level that we, that the previous year actual was. It's more than what we budgeted the previous year. We assume no increase in utility or tax rate. However, we, we do encourage you to direct staff to bring you back a review of water and electric rates. It does include most of our fleet needs and those were identified through the CIP process. The one fleet need that it doesn't include is because the person that will never trade in a car has retired and the person sitting in the driver's seat of this pickup truck says, you know, it's about time we trade in this 1999 pickup. So anyway, we may, may see, now that Flint's gone, we may be able to buy a couple of trucks. Yes, sir?
Where does attorney's fees go into this?
Attorney's fees, we actually have budgeted in a couple of places because they were so intensely, intensively directed towards water litigation for a while. We actually kept some in Fund 82, in the non-departmental Fund 82. We kept a big chunk of attorney's fees there. More often than not, they're in 10599, which is general fund, non-departmental.
Can, can, can you be prepared during our budget discussions to tell us what we spent in attorney's fees?
Oh, sure. You bet. You bet.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd rather tell you this year than about three or four years ago, but absolutely we can, we can pull that and highlight that number for attorney's fees. And of course, as council knows, we don't just have one attorney. We have water litigators. We use some attorney, you know, we've, we've actually used some attorneys for technology, for pole attachment agreements, for fiber, et cetera. So.
Well, just so everybody knows, the, the litigation that we were involved with on the water side, that was actually charged off to the, I mean, we fronted it, but we're supposed to be getting some of that back.
Correct. We get, we get that back. We didn't get 100% of it back, but there was a settlement amount that was in the judgment. So, correct. And the other thing that I'll tell you is that you still have a very aggressive capital program. And that's maintained not only through the operating fund, but as we'll look at, your, your capital program is also funded through ARPA, the 2022 CO funds and Fund 40 hot sources. And again, as council may direct through other sources. So what we've got in there, our budget includes cemetery pickup, library web app, which I believe is on the agenda tonight, park tractor, Hannah Springs pool liner, two equipped PD units, some work on the public works building and business park electric infrastructure. Other items that we may ask you to consider that was brought, that was brought up as we were meeting with department heads is PD patrol unit routers. And that's probably the easiest way to describe it, Monica. But this is an upgrade in terms of instead of having an air card in their car, they actually have a, an antenna that will push more information through to the police station. And I think we've talked to council previously about the fact that the police department is a heavy user of internet and broadband in that sort of, in that capacity. Recruitment and retention and compensation, again, council had talked about that being a, an item that they wanted to look at again at the first of the year. And I think you have the ability to direct staff to go ahead and push that forward. Just as a reminder, about a 1% increase in compensation is about $70,000 and that's a burdened cost. The other curve ball that we have to deal with that we'll talk about probably in the next agenda item that we've informed you about by email and other correspondences, the possible impact of county EMS procurement and support. We don't know what that is. And so we know that it may be something, but we just, we don't have a handle on it yet. And we'll talk about that in the next agenda item.
With, on these inclusions and stuff like that, you've got a park tractor, but was I told correctly that the backhoe's not working at the cemetery?
Chris cut out. I'd, I'd.
Yeah. So I was wondering if that's going to be part of the next budget, like to get them back a backhoe because it seems pretty important.
I'll have to look into that.
Okay, thanks.
So in terms of, we'll, we'll talk about some non-fund, non-operating fund balances and operating fund balances. And again, what we hope to do is not to say we've got a huge pot of money that we can spend, but, but just to say, hey, we are financially healthy. You do have some resources to look at. Our general fund is about 3.8 million in fund balance. It's assigned and unassigned. The, the item that we have talked about previously is unassigning, unassigning some of these funds so that you have just a pool of money that you can say, use it for this purpose. Hotel and motel tax funds is about 3.1.3 million. CARES Act 493. The last time you looked at this information was May 17th, and that CARES Act fund balance was about 970. You can see that's been drawn down as we have paid for water and wastewater infrastructure through the business park. Key Avenue Fund, Fund 62 is 100,000. That hasn't changed as well as 68. You have about 72,000 that remains available and unencumbered. Electric Fund, about 6.1 million, water wastewater, 2.1, and then your CO Fund is about 6.5 million.
On that 62 Key Avenue Fund, what all can be funded out of that?
I think it had fairly broad purposes, even though it says Key Avenue Fund, but I think it could, I think it could fund a number of water and wastewater projects. I'm not sure about park, but we can check on that. We, we can? Or we can check on it? Okay.
Nothing to do with hot funds, though, you think?
That doesn't mean that you could, if it was a park, you know, regard, you might be able to label it as a park project as opposed to a hot or tourism project. So that, that may be an option.
Or the, the tank out at the pavilion that she was talking about, the water catch basin, is that, would that?
Possibly, possibly.
Or what about, what about the increased cost on the wall?
Possibly. And frankly, so the other thing that you could do is, again, we're sitting at about, where is it? So we've got plus or minus a little over 40% in fund balance. And what our policy says, we need to have about 35% in fund balance. So because we cannot find just a specific pot of money or specific non-operating fund balance that would cover a cost, it doesn't mean that you can't do it. It just means that you would, we would have to budget and then, and then budget in retained, undesigned retained earnings as income and then the correlating expense for the project that we wanted to do. Certainly, I think it's good policy, if you do that, that you do that for capital projects. You don't do that for something you're going to have to feed every year, like salaries and things like that. If that, if that
That does.
Kind of clarify, regardless if that 107 can be used for that purpose or not, or whether you may be able to use that for another purpose and then say, you know, at least kind of justify trading money, spending, you know, I'm going to use this for this and then I'll have this available to spend for the wall at the park. I think the important thing is we can, if council will tell us what to do, what they want to have done, then Yvonne and I can sit down and normally figure out a way to make it happen.
How long has that been sitting in there?
2011.
2011? Oh, 2001.
62? Oh, 62's been in there since '06, I believe.
Wow.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the Key Avenue.
No, well, yeah, 62.
And one of the deals with 62, I'll tell you, is that that project was over in 12 or 13. It probably took us two years to true up with Text Dot. And then we got a big refund back. So it wasn't like it's been sitting there for that long. It went through kind of a process with Text Dot.
So Finley, perhaps before we start the first budget meeting, we could get a reading on what each of these funds can be used for.
Certainly.
So we, we know for sure what we can assign it to. And didn't we at one time unrestrict some stuff?
Yes.
Is that legal?
Oh, yes, because these are restricted by council, so council can unrestrict them.
We can unrestrict them.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And council, council has, it's your prerogative. If you want to say we want to put money away for green bushes, you can do that. I mean, I wouldn't advise that because I don't, I think it takes away some latitude for future councils. But we've got some money here that's still assigned for parks and comp plan, park improvements and, you know, you may, we may just want to unassign all of that and it's still there. It's just doesn't have that label on it.
Right, right.
So again, talking about kind of an aggressive capital project plan that's not really related to our, our operating funds, but we've got money set aside for the upper pressure plane business park. You remember, that business park line represents one of the first pieces of our upper pressure plane because it's going to go through the business park as it loops to the south. Looping projects, water relocation on 281 South, emergency generation, and then that little piece of fire apparatus, as council may recall, is all funded through ARPA. Fund 65, the 2022 CO issue, those are the items that council targeted, although the language in the purpose is a little more general than what you see here. But when we started looking at these wastewater plant, hostess house rehab, upper pressure plane improvements, water wastewater shop lab, exterior improvements, looping, sewer line replacement, those are the projects that Ryan talked about, and then the Calvert improvements. So even though those are not budgeted out of operating, you still have a lot on your plate in terms of capital improvements. This is also another schedule that you've seen previously and it's, some of the numbers have changed. Your year to date income has gone up. You saw this May 17th, I believe May 17th, it was 103,000. Your year to date income now is 144,000. You're seeing some expenditure when Chris said he got the fence in for $15,414. You'll see that as a expenditure to date under the Hannah Spring fencing. Couple of things to point out, even though we show a deficit, so we've got more projects than money is generally what this is saying. However, it's counting 100% of the hostess house. And if you look at the previous, we had about 800,000 designated, identified from Fund 65 for the hostess house. So that should cover that, providing the bids come into estimate, as well as keep the 200,000 in the hot fund that council directed to do. Am I, am I chasing you in circles here or?
No, you're fine.
And I'll get, so again, I think we're, we're in a good position. We've got some work to do, but I think our budget bottom line is positive. I, I think hopefully through reviewing some of these funds and the financial condition that you understand that you have latitude for modification, inclusion amendment, based on whatever priorities you direct staff to follow. We also feel like you are in a good position in the event you wanted to use a portion of reserve. Doesn't mean you have to, but if there's something council felt strongly about, certainly you could direct staff to find options for funding of those priorities. And then we'll also, as this says, it will, we'll put together the purposes on those other funds and get those to you. What and I'm not asking for a vote, but tell me if anything on this list is crazy. Do you, we'd like you to consider, we, we don't want to do anything for accelerated purchases, but we do want to remind you, and again, that's because we've been pretty laser focused on FY '23 budget. But what we do want to remind you of is that you, if you do want to use any of that surplus from 2022, But what we do want to remind you of is that you, if you do want to use any of that surplus from 2022, if we have some, you can always assign it. So Chief Smith wanted to budget some money for future apparatus. And I think my position is, let's see what our surplus is. If there's some left over, let's put a, let's put a label on it that says future fire apparatus is an option. Council doesn't have to do that, but certainly that's an option for you to consider. We're not trying to buy any fleet ahead of time, I guess, based on what we're telling you. Consider use of reserve for items budgeted in FY '22 that will be completed in FY '23. So we did that with Third Street. We weren't able to complete it over. We rolled that money over to the following budget year because it wasn't expended in the previous budget. The example I would use is our pool liner. We had budgeted that in '22. We, our timing wasn't right to make sure that we would be able to open the pool on time. So we pushed that to fall. Well, what we may do is say, okay, that's money we didn't spend in FY '22. Let's go ahead and pull it out of reserves and use it for '23. That's, that's something that we may look at. We'd also be interested in your comments regarding a review of water and wastewater rates. The, as well as increases based on electric reliability. Consideration and direction of staff for inclusion of compensation for FY '23. We certainly feel like that's what council was telling us to do. And we have the means to do that, I believe, in the current budget condition. And then certainly, we'd like to hear your ideas for dates and topics for future budget workshops and departmental presentations. I think the departmental presentations have always been pretty valuable to council. And so we want to make sure that's, as well as we've also set up workshops just for specific topics. For example, if you wanted just to look at utility rates, we could spend some time in a workshop session just on that. But we'd certainly like your comments on that. Do you see that that's Avenue E now and what it was before? Isn't that amazing? So we've got to set a tax rate that we have not gotten our final information on that. We still have some computer input to do, some additional scrubbing. We've got to prepare for departmental presentations. If you want us to review some rates on utilities, we'd be happy to do that. Public hearings and adoptions, we do all that before the end of September. But I know I threw a lot at you, but I would certainly be interested in any comments and directions you might be able to provide at this time. And certainly, if you're thinking about future dates, that would be good, too. We don't, I would not recommend the 18th because, like I said, we haven't even gotten, I haven't even given Yvonne my scrub numbers yet, so it'll take, take a little time to do that.
So can we come up with a date that would be agreeable to start the budget process?
I'm good, just.
I'm pretty good anytime, so you three?
I'm out on the 18th through the 22nd of this month.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be in, set right now, I'll be in trial all week, the 25th to the 29th.
Is August 1 available?
Yes.
Not for me, the next week I would be.
August what?
I just, but August 1 won't work for you?
Not that week, no, sir.
Okay.
On the 8th, uh-huh.
And we can certainly do some of this work in the workshop session as well on the 25th.
I'd like to see us work in as many as we can.
Yes. In the workshop session?
There's a, there's a lot to go over.
Yes.
So start on the 25th, and then at that point, we'll have some other direction as to when it's good.
And if any of it's available prior to y'all finishing scrubbing, if there's any part of it we can discuss between now and when y'all finish scrubbing, I think we ought to go ahead and try to get that out of the way.
Let's start on the 25th, then. We'll take a good portion of the workshop session, try to keep that agenda kind of light.
Yes.
With the exception of budget, and then look for additional direction from you. Is anything that I said, kind of, does?
I've got a question for you. Just, it says setting tax rate, current value, preliminary net tax value, 549,000. That's what we're currently receiving from our tax base now? Is that how I interpret?
That's the net taxable value. So that's the value of all the property within the corporate limits of the city. And that's after homestead exemption and veteran exemption and et cetera, so.
Just straight off property tax?
Yes.
Okay.
So for you to do some rate reviews, you'd go out and look at communities like Burnett and so forth. I think you should go ahead and start that.
Well, and I think the other thing I would do is take, and you can hire smarter people than I can, than I am, to go out and do a rate review, but what they're going to take a look at is the cost. What is it costing you to run your water wastewater operation versus what you're paying? And I think we can do a simplified version of that. And I think we'd want to look at it maybe over three years, kind of what the trend has been. We're certainly seeing some things within water wastewater that would increase costs, that would suggest that we need to look at rates.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Finley. Next item is discussion regarding the Lampasas County procurement of EMS services.
Mayor and council, I'd originally thought I would, and I've sent you some information on this by email. And I'd originally thought about reporting to you on this meeting, but I think it's probably more appropriate to put it on a workshop. I think it invites more conversation and more discussion. And certainly, I would, I'll hit some of the high spots. And then I might even, Mayor and Councilmember Keeney, I might defer to you for your comments since you were able to attend that meeting. But as I've discussed or communicated with you, council had previously received notice in the form of a forwarded email from Judge Hoyer regarding the cancellation of EMS contract with Acadian effective October 1. The judge certainly has under more than one, more than one time has mentioned the fact that that's a statutory obligation of the county. That being said, I think there certainly could possibly be some impact to the city regarding that. And I think there's some, you know, some vested interest in making sure that our citizens do have access to emergency care and transportation. The judge put together a meeting on July 6th, and we had staff, number of our public safety staff, as well as myself and Ryan, and then also Councilmember Keeney and Mayor Monroe also attended. Generally, the meeting was to introduce and maybe even interview two different ambulance services that the judge asked for proposals from. One was AMR and one was Hamilton Hospital District. The issues with either of them are, one is AMR would require a subsidy to come in to Lampasas County. As Acadian basically suggested, they could stick around, but it would cost 1.3 million annually. Hamilton, on the other hand, would not require a subsidy. However, they do not do any of their own dispatching. So they would need an entity or either dual dispatching for their services to come in, although they would not require a subsidy. The, at least, staff has been operating on, under a couple of different scenarios in terms of preparation for whoever would come into town related to dispatch or not. The elephant in the room certainly is, how would costs be allocated? And I think there's, as the judge said, the county has a statutory responsibility for providing the service. However, I would not be shocked if the city is looked at for some sort of participation. Now, to be clear, participation is up to council. One of the things that we suggested to the judge was that the policymakers need to sit down together. You need to have a stakeholder meeting. Again, we have about, we have about one-third of the population in the county. We also support about one-third of the tax base for the county. So about 30%, of their levy comes from the city of Lampasas. So we're, we already pay taxes to the county as well. But that's something that you guys will need to talk about. And I think the judge is interested in getting those proposals and visiting with you, council as a whole, at some point in the very near future. But Mayor and Councilmember Keeney, I might just step back and let you also discuss what your perceptions of that meeting was, as well as thoughts on moving forward. And I'd be interested in whatever council direction or council input or discussion.
Well, for myself, it was interesting because we were arbitrarily told that Acadian was going to leave and that for them to stay, it would be 1.34 million dollars. It wasn't until we were in the meeting that we found out why Acadian is leaving. And they've lost some of their funding, not through us, but through other sources. And so the other two companies, one can't do it without a subsidy, the other one could. And the reason they can do that is because of their revenue sources. They are based out of Hamilton, and Hamilton is a critical care situation. Is that the word that they use, critical?
Critical care hospital owned EMS.
So for instance, we, in Lampasas, we have a 60% Medicare rate because we're all old and we're on Medicare. Other communities have a lot of Medicaid. Medicaid pays a few cents on the dollar. Medicare for this critical care, for a transport, would be $2,400 that Hamilton would receive versus $600 that the other company would receive. And so that's the reasoning behind the subsidy and the no subsidy part. Like I say, it's just a matter of how much the other company comes back with to say they want for subsidy. Most people are saying they'd want at least as much as Acadian, which would be the 1.3 million. So of that, whatever portion we have to pay would be what we have to pay, I guess.
And one of the, I mean, it was very interesting to see how the different business models were able to handle that because it had to do with how they were, you know, how they're funded. But my biggest question, which is still not, I don't, they don't have a bid yet from the, from both EMS service providers yet, do they?
No.
And the other players in the, that should be up here at the podium include Chief Smith and Chief Cummings, who are also at the meeting, but I'm not aware of any proposals that the county has received. Are you?
Friday of this week, so we'll know something by next, a little bit more by next. When was it, were they having a, they're having a commissioners' meeting next Monday, is that correct?
No, they had one today. He was going to call one if necessary.
Okay. So it just, there's so much depending on what happens because it's going to be the cost of what it's going to cost the county and potentially the city depending to do the dispatching versus what's going to be the cost of the supplement if they go with the other company. It's like both companies had things to offer. But Hamilton, with the impression I got, is that Hamilton, with not only what they were able to offer because of the money, but what they offered in ambulance care and medication on their units and all that stuff, was a huge potential benefit to the county and the city because they could have more critical care. And it sounded like they would work very closely with the police department or the fire department that have the paramedics, is that correct, Mr. Chief Smith? So I think it's all going to come down to money and what can be afforded. And correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I have a question. Do, does Acadian own all the infrastructure here?
I believe, I believe so.
Buildings and all of that?
I believe so.
So county has, county has no ownership in any of that?
One of the, someone said, was it the judge that said it's privately owned? The building over there? It's privately owned?
Okay, where their, where their ambulances are is privately owned. They just lease it.
So that was the impression he gave, that it would continue to be available for lease?
For rent, yeah.
That's what I was wondering. And also, have they, the current ambulance facility, have they, do they bill on every run?
I would assume, I'm not sure. I think they bill for everything they can bill for.
Yeah, the other thing that they had told us in the meeting is that how the ambulances make their money because they don't make money on the 911 calls, they make money on transports, which has to do with how the one's funded versus the other one. And the other thing that was important to me and interesting to me was how if with the one company, AMR, I believe is their name, is that correct? We would be like an island. So like, let's say that we have two, two and a half, we have two ambulances here in town, and they're doing different things. If both of those ambulances is out, then the next closest ambulance service that they have is in Temple. Whereas in Hamilton, we would be like completing their little loop because they're all, and the county's all around us. And they were talking about like, they, we would have a closer ambulance if our two and a half or three, I think they were going to do three ambulances. Where it would be easier if there were different ones doing the different runs to different hospitals, where we'd have more coverage. Although that one's the one that's going to cost us to have to learn how to dispatch. And then that's a whole bunch of other issues.
And I will say that Chief Cummings and his team have been working on scenarios and what-ifs. And I think if council were to ask us in a day or two, well, how much would this cost if we did this? I think we'd be prepared to make that, prepared to give you an answer.
So have the dispatchers had a chance to, because the dispatchers were going to get together and talk and have a, have a, the scenarios, has that happened yet or not yet?
Chief Cummings, do you want to speak to that? Or do you want? I'd be happy to answer, but I think the answer is yes, but. Do you want to elaborate?
So was dispatching, so both y'all and the county, could you expand a little bit more on that? Because that's, that was a huge concern, is that, you know, you could have these amazing ambulances, but how are you going to get it to places it needs to go? Like, could our dispatching handle it? And like, what would the cost be to that?
Well, again, we're working on some numbers now. I don't, yes, we can handle it, to answer your question. About 20 years ago, we did emergency medical dispatch prior to computers. We actually had physical books. And when a call came in, depending on the nature, they'd have to narrow it down, flip the books, flip the pages. It's an extension of that, but obviously it's computerized now. So we don't have any current dispatchers, other than Kelly, who was brand new at that time, who's now our supervisor, that did those by books. I'm sorry, we do have one dispatcher that did those by book. She's been around a while, worked actually in Hamilton prior to coming to us. So we would get computerized, we would learn. I've talked to two dispatchers myself, Kelly's talked to a couple of others that'd be willing to do that. One of them herself worked at another place when she did this type of dispatching prior. So it's not something that's going to scare our dispatchers to death. But we will have to have some training, it's several days worth. We will have to have some computer software. I believe our central Texas council governments will help us with about half of that fee. And we're trying to figure out, because there's different softwares available, what will be best for us that might work with our current dispatching module software. So she's actually working on that with, Kelly is with two entities today, trying to figure out what that might cost. So can we have it completely ready to go without any bumps on October 1st when Acadian says that they're going to leave? I don't know, but probably not. But I bet we can be a good ways towards that direction and be comfortable getting better as we go. and be comfortable getting better as we go in the next few months, if we had to. It'll be a lot, but we'll get it done. Is that close enough?
That is great, thank you. Very reassuring.
Anything else?
Nothing from mine, unless there's any other, we're continuing to, again, I think as the chief said, well, is, we'll be prepared to do whatever council and the elected officials tell us to do.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, is there any item on the regular agenda that anyone wishes to speak to? If not, I think we should adjourn for a short break, 10 minutes. If I could get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the workshop session.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. We'll take a 10-minute break. Citizen comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that's not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. I have one name, Peggy Wolf. No? Next item is citizens, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time. Anyone? Come on up. You'll need to introduce yourself.
My name is Barbara Hagel, and I have a ranch outside of town, and I am here tonight because I have some concerns about the relief root. Is it appropriate at this time for me to be on record about that, or should I wait?
That is not on our agenda. Did you say the relief root? You're talking about the TechDOT item?
Yes. Yes, it says relief root right here.
You're talking about the 281, are they, the big loop around? Which one?
Correct. Yes.
The loop around?
Yes.
It is considered on our agenda, Mayor, as a report item, but.
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the city of Lampasas asked TechDOT to do this study, which is being done right now, and as far as I'm understanding, they have not decided exactly if there is going to be a relief route. I know that there are other projects that have already been funded, the expansion of 281, which goes right in front of my ranch, but I guess my concern is that I will, I'm worried about the businesses in Lampasas. I do not want it to turn into a place that, where the businesses suffer. And I am, I am excited about the city of Lampasas and what they are doing in the way of the arts, because that's one of my passions, but I also want them to be successful in all that they are trying to do with Campbell Park, the sculpture and everything, and I want other people that are traveling through this city to be able to recognize that and be a part of that. And I'm just wondering that the bypass might take people around and, and they would miss all of that. And I, I want to, I know Fredericksburg turned down TechDOT's invitation to do their relief route, because of that very reason, because of the businesses might, that might suffer from that. So anyway, I'm just here to go on record that I would, I would like to see that you really, really consider that very carefully about putting the bypass in.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
2.0 minutes, discussion and possible action concerning approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 27th, 2022.
In reading the minutes, they looked accurate, so I would move to approve.
Randy, you might have to be the only one to second, because the others weren't here. Second for the minutes, if you don't mind? Okay, I have a motion and a second, and the three of us that were here would say okay?
Yes.
And these three will be abstaining.
You, yes, or Mr. Clark, you had asked that we add in there for the tabulation, and I did add that in our signature ones that Ms. Monroe has.
Okay. All good?
Yes.
3.0, consent agenda, discussion and possible action regarding the purchases and charges in excess of $4,000 from June 1 to June 30, 2022. Second one is discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of an ordinance, amending City of Lampasas Code of Ordinances, Chapter 70, Subdivision, Section 70.6, Guarantee of Performance F, Maintenance Guarantee. Does anyone wish to remove either of those? I would take a motion then to approve.
I'll second.
Of a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 4.0, boards, department report, we have information technology annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The IT department consists of the system administrator, Kristi Acevedo, who has been with the city approximately six years, the IT director, myself, in which I have worked with the city for approximately 17 years. Our department provides 24/7 support to approximately 110 full-time employees, 16 part-time employees, and 10 departments. Also contracted out is TSM Consulting Services, in which they provide 24/7 remote support for our network, for our city network and our police department network. The IT department strives to provide complete technology-based support for all city departments 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in the most cost-effective manner to facilitate reliability, availability, and security of the city's network. Our department develops and maintains system priorities, ongoing information technology planning, and drive for accuracy. Our department also pursues and initiates improvement projects to bring out positive information system changes for the city. For the month of May, our department responded to 434 IT service tickets. We had a total of 6,953 Facebook followers, 694 Twitter followers, 278 Instagram followers, and 30,230 website page views. On the next slide, you will see our city fiber network connections. We currently have 11 city buildings connected, with the library being our most recent connection, and five city buildings that are not connected. The five buildings that are not connected have approximately one to two computers, therefore it doesn't make sense financially to run structured fiber cable to them. In a future fiscal year, we will be asking for funds to implement air fiber in order to bring them onto our existing city network when it becomes available. Our department provides support for 92 desktop PCs, 52 laptops, 69 printers, 21 switches, 45 air cards, 33 iPhones, 22 servers, three firewalls, 22 tablets, and 30-plus software So fiscal year 21, 22 projects that we have completed include: the police department criminal justice systems, SEJIS audit. We configured and installed new antivirus software application on all PCs and servers. We upgraded operating system on two fiscal servers and two VM servers. We configured and replaced 14 wireless access points. We also worked with city staff to run network cable at the Public Works Barn, so that we could add security cameras at that building location. We've also been working with staff and vendor on water wastewater SCADA software solution and the connection to that. We configured and replaced 15 desktop computers. We worked with vendor to run structured fiber cable to the library, and then we added those computers onto the city's existing network. We also upgraded our existing Microsoft Office Exchange email Plan 1 to Plan 2. And we also worked with vendor to upgrade meter reader handheld software. We configured and replaced two police department patrol unit laptops, configured and replaced our city fiber network switch, and added our PD firewall to our existing WatchGuard cloud portal. FY 21, 22 projects that are currently in progress and have not been completed, that we're still working on, is the ENCODE-COR cardinal interface for PD citation import. We predict that that will be done in August. Our new city website redesign, our expected launch date is August of 2022, and I'm really excited to share with everyone the new design, and I'm excited about that. We've put a great deal of time into it, so be looking out for that. We have five Public Works rugged tablets that we are currently configuring and will issue out to the Public Works Department, and we will be submitting our citywide mandatory cybersecurity training to the state DIR at the end of this month. And we are also obtaining quotes for IT building maintenance and added security improvements to the IT building. Also listed in your packet is a list of all the daily, weekly, and monthly tasks that our department is responsible for. I won't go over all of those, but they are in your packet. Cybersecurity training. So in June, our department sent out an email to all city employees and city council regarding our mandatory annual cybersecurity training to satisfy House Bill 3834. This training module allows our department to send out simulated phishing tests to see if attachments and emails are open and/or links clicked on. When a user opens an attachment or clicks a link, it allows our department to see who that employee was and provide them with further education on cybersecurity and keeping our network safe. Employees have until July 28th to have it completed, and then we will be reporting back to the state to meet compliance on that. Are there any questions?
Yes. Really, it's a really quick one, because, you know, in the emails, we've gotten the cybersecurity as council, we're supposed to do that too, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And y'all have been getting those right?
And I think we have three that have not completed.
And what was that, I'm sorry?
Three of us have not completed the security training.
We have a little bit of time.
Line 28. Anyone else have any questions?
Where do you go for the security training? That's what? Oh, okay.
And if you do have any questions about the cybersecurity training, just reach out to us, and we'd be glad to help you out.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued support.
Next item is city manager's operational report.
Just keep, few keep, quick items, Mayor and Council. First of all, the business part, contractor wasn't on site last week, but we do understand that they still remain ahead of the game and ahead of their schedule, as Assistant Manager Ward pointed out. Subgrades generally to elevation as final underground infrastructure is being installed, and I think Ryan also pointed out, because of some supply chain issues with that, those box culverts, they have to, they're going to have to go in with some more readily available RCP pipe or just corrugated, yeah, so corrugated. But anyway, that, that remains some of the challenges they're having, but they're still able to, should be able to get that done. They now think that there's a likelihood they may be done by November.
Are they going to replace those metal coves?
So with the material supply.
Because.
Concrete box culverts are not readily available, and so they were looking at, our engineers actually looking at the four gate metal pipe, the big structure coming off the ground.
Okay, but because they have a lifespan fairly short, and that, that's what I'm wondering, and they're generally less expensive as well.
This will be a significant cost savings, depending on if they're working with the engineer, and they may not need the concrete headball either for that box structure, they may want to slope it, and then concrete brackets to slope, which would save quite a bit of the device or the infrastructure itself.
I'm just, structurally, are they meeting the standard of the concrete, as far as the trucks going in and over it?
Right. Yeah, it would, it would be, so the backfield and the compaction would still be just the same, you know, they would still get the same compaction from the pipes. They were looking at four, I believe it's four 60-inch CMP pipes versus an eight-by-five concrete box, two of those. So the water, you know, the engineer's working on it right now, and that was his suggestion, and he's doing some other investigation in that, and he feels like, you know, as far as the water and the amount of water he can do through those same-sized pipes, and if those are readily available.
I'm just wondering that the structural standards and the lifespan on those things. I don't want to have to tear.
As long as the concrete possible, so which is also, I'm paying a bigger.
I, I understand that, but I'm talking about short-term, short-term replacement.
Right. And I, and I think you're right, and I guess that would be a decision made by probably EC boards, if they want to go forward with making that change in regards to the longevity of that, you know, it's just if you don't, if you don't do something different there, the timeframe is going to extend out, so.
Well, I mean, they can't get concrete pipe either.
Right. You can't get RCP either, because that was my first suggestion, can we get RCP pipe in exchange for that? It's the same dilemma that they're running into with concrete box structures, so four gate metal pipe is their solution.
Well, I would think the car gating would change the, the base covering and so on, so forth. They might have to rework that.
Right. But it'll still, based on the design, it would still handle the program.
Okay. I just worry about the lifespan.
The lifespan.
You also have included up there kind of a funding recap whereby we try to determine the cost of the project versus the financial resources available. Looks like we're still in good shape, probably with a little, little money left over for signage or some other whatever might come up. We will have a couple of. We will have a couple of, as Ryan indicated, a couple of, uh, items that may reduce the overall cost as well. The relief route, uh, we did, there was a public engagement meeting on June 28th, uh, to basically see, seek in public input on potential routes. Uh, just as a reminder, truck traffic has been identified as an issue to our residents and businesses through the comprehensive planning process. I think it was well over 100. I don't know what the newspaper reported. I think the newspaper probably reported 200, but there was, there was plenty of folks there, not only, uh, local, uh, business owners and residents, but also folks that lived in the county who, uh, also wanted to take a look and see how they may be affected by the route. Uh, in the next, over the next several months, Tech Dot, Tech Dot will compile, um, and map all of the suggested routes and comments, uh, for presentation to the public, trying to glean out some common themes, and that is tentatively scheduled for November 3rd, 2022.
Um, hey, Finley, um, on a, I'd like to mention on that relief route, um, I wasn't able to attend the June 28th meeting, so I did the online, which is actually still available until the 13th, which is tomorrow, is that correct? No, day after. So it's still available, and, and that was interesting because there's plenty of comments and ways that they're gonna include in the public when they come back.
Sure.
So if you haven't had a chance to look at that, that's still available. And you just go to Tech Dot? If, you go online to Tech Dot and then you do the Lampassus relief route, and then that's available still?
Certainly, I, I, I think they've done, uh, as Councilmember Kenny suggests, they've done a number of different methods and vehicles for public input, so I think it's been pretty effective, or at least it shouldn't be an excuse that couldn't able, couldn't be able to attend a meeting, a virtual meeting or live meeting or give your input online. Uh, short-term rentals, just, just to quickly let you know that, hey, we've been, Becky's been digging into this, and it's interesting, some of the things that, uh, she has come up, uh, some of the things that other communities, uh, have been addressing is, you know, the obvious one is, you know, how do we handle the quiet enjoyment of your property, uh, in terms of the residential neighborhoods and making sure, taking a look at how some communities have handled that. Uh, some have also seen it as a, a potential loss of long-term housing stock, and, uh, that may be one of the reasons I heard today that Fredericksburg had a moratorium on short-term, uh, uh, short-term rentals, but, uh, that, that, you know, parking, making sure that there are not 20 people parking, uh, along your street and in front of your own house if they have an Airbnb next door and occupancy loads. Uh, also, a number of communities do use a third-party vendor to administer this program and make sure there's compliance and collect fees for it, et cetera. So we continue to, uh, dig through that, and obviously we'll, uh, package up our findings and bring them back to the Planning Commission and Council in the near future. Uh, Pole Barn, as Ryan reported on, that is, uh, uh, under construction, the piers have been poured, should be standing iron this week. Um, we just wanted to remind you that we were able to increase the footprint of that because of the materials that we had available. And, uh, sales tax took a little dip. This is probably the first little, the first dip we've seen in sales tax month compared to the same month a year ago. Um, my guess is it's probably been 24 to 36 months. I'd have to go back and take a look. Uh, the good news is that we're still eight, uh, over eight and a half percent, um, better year-to-date than we were a year ago, so we'll continue to keep an eye on that. Just a couple of other things I wanted to throw in as well is that, uh, just so you know, we have instructed our staffs to, uh, uh, work smart in this heat. We have tried to give them some latitude if they need to adjust schedules and come in earlier and get off earlier, if they need to, uh, adjust duties so that they're maybe doing more of the inside duties in the afternoon, they do that, but, uh, we've just tried to reinforce to them that, uh, this is dangerous heat, and, uh, we also need to make sure we spend enough time to make sure our folks are hydrated. The, uh, just a quick note on the grid, and I know I had, I shot out a couple of things this afternoon on the ERCOT grid. Um, it's something we're monitoring very closely. If, uh, if the wind had not picked up when it did, uh, it would have been real tight. Uh, so if we, if we get a little hiccup in wind, or if we have a, a, a plan or two trip off, uh, the reserve margin that we had this afternoon was about 3,000 meg, and normally that reserve on any given day is about 10,000. And sometimes if there's variable weather where they can't predict, um, the heat or the cold or the wind, sometimes they'll ramp that up to 12,000 to 15,000 meg. So it, it's a very tight margin that we're dealing with. We'll continue to keep you informed, uh, as best we can. Please, by all means, go to the ERCOT website. Uh, that, that's kind of helpful in terms of taking a look and seeing exactly where that difference is between su- supply and demand. The other thing I'd, I'd just remind you of is, uh, I will be out the remainder of the week and, uh, be visiting with granddaughter at the beach.
Good luck. Myself, I'd just like to add to Chief Cunningham's comments, a congratulation and a thank you to the Spring Ho Committee. Once again, they've highlighted the best of Lampassus and kept everybody here for a week, hopefully spending lots of money and seeing all the sights. Uh, it's very heartening that, uh, we had such a good turnout for every event, it looked like. We have no unfinished business. New business, 7.1, discussion and selection of the website photo contest.
Mayor and City Council, there was one photo submitted for the month of June.
I move, we pick the one photo.
Second.
I have a motion from Kathy and a second from Randy, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 7.2, discussion and possible action regarding the Tech Dot Highway 281 South right-of-way acquisition from the City of Lampassus and cost to cure reimbursement in the amount of $22,577. Thank you.
I think the minutes sort of flex such. Pardon? Okay. Uh, Mayor and Council, you should have some materials at your desks. I believe we had these available at the last meeting. Uh, this was presented last meeting, however, we were unable to take, uh, action on it due to, uh, lack of, of a quorum on this item itself. Just as a reminder, this relates to the conveyance of a narrow strip of land from the City of Lampassus to, uh, Texas Department of Transportation for the widening project on 281. As a reminder, it's about, uh, a 700-foot strip by 15 feet generally from the Assisted Living to Alfredo's, and it's, I mean, I think the best way to describe it, it's, it's Creek Bank. We did receive the offer, Council did, as a reminder, authorize the city manager to, uh, finalize that conveyance. However, there's one piece that I want your, uh, uh, authority, uh, for, to deal with, and that's the cost to cure. We did receive the appraised compensation amount of $53,000 for the piece of land, and then there is a cost to cure of about $22,000. The cost to cure is for those, um, improvements on that property that will now be taken away. And primarily, as you see in your, uh, handouts, that's, uh, a rock wall, a fence, a cattle gate, uh, et cetera. Those are primarily at the, for the benefit of the person that, that has that access easement. What I would ask Council to consider is authority, uh, giving, giving the authority to, uh, the city manager to reimburse the owners in the event they wanted to put a fence back up, for example, uh, to reimburse them the amount within the Tech Dot estimate for, for doing so. We get the money regardless, it's just a question of that, and I think, uh, certainly, I don't know that there's a need for a cattle guard. They may or may not want to put up another walk wall, but I'd just like the latitude to go ahead and take care of that within the budgeted amount we received from Tech Dot, and I'd be happy to, uh, try to answer any questions.
Okay, I just want to understand that, so that's our property, but we didn't put up the rock wall and the cattle guard, but, but it, was it not, was it our property when that was put up?
It, I believe that, and I would have to double-check, but I believe that's part of the new, the, the new nine on the golf course, and so that probably existed as before we acquired it. Am I, am I close?
So, like, so when that property owner that had that previously sold us the golf course stuff, that was there?
That's my understanding, yes.
So there's no real need for like a cattle guard over there, is there?
No, um, I mean, we don't, uh, there are no cattle in 281, and there are no cattle on the golf course that we need to keep from one, one from the other, so. Uh, again, I, I, I think if, uh, the person that has that access easement, if they wanted to redo the rock wall, I, I personally wouldn't have a problem with that. It would just have to be moved back a little bit, and, but I think the fence makes sense because there are a lot of people that are kind of going, crawling back and forth along the creek, and maybe that makes some sense, and if they wanted to do that, I think that's the reason you have the cost to cure, so you can reimburse for those expenses.
If someone would like to make a motion, we could continue with any other questions?
And, and owners is defined above, I don't know if you want to change that within the motion language, but owners refers to the, uh, uh, the items in an access easement to the property owners to the west, so that's what owners refer to, it doesn't refer to the city.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to reimburse the owners for cost to cure items within the Texas DOT estimates for the actual work completed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there other questions now that we need to answer?
I guess I'm, I guess I'm a little confused on, on if we own it, why we, like, did we have an agreement with them that we would keep it looking like that?
No.
Right, I understand that.
I'm not, I'm, those improvements I generally associate with the property owner to the west because it is part of their access easement. That's obviously the entrance, that was the entrance to their property.
So it's part, it's because it's part of their easement?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that makes sense then.
Any other concerns, questions? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. 7.3, discussion and possible action regarding proposal from Snyder Engineering for SCADA network design and installation in the amount of $64,530.
Mayor, Council? This particular item is in regards to a proposal, uh, from Snyder Engineering. The scope of the work for this is to finalize out our SCADA system for the electric department and to be able to communicate and talk to the various substations and the reclosers as well as having the ability to get notifications, um, out to our devices to let us know when there's some sort of issue or if we need to do, um, some sort of maintenance. So having the ability to do that kind of virtually, um, is huge for our electric department. And basically, the, uh, the proposal is for, uh, the Lampassus substation, the Roona substation, Walmart recloser, Santa Fe recloser, which is there by Tractor Supply, and, um, our actual office, and there's five cellular routers that will be configured. Um, this is really kind of a networking project, so it's the software that lives in the cloud that we'll be accessing, which is the Saucumia Site Manager, um, that will be installed on a device, but having the ability to talk, that's, um, that's the intent of this project. And there's a little diagram, but, but the overall intent is to have the ability to know when things need to be addressed in advance without having a phone call and somebody saying, "The grid's down over here in our neighborhood," so.
I would move to approve the proposal submitted by Snyder Engineering for the SCADA network design and installation in the amount of $64,530.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions of Mr. Ward?
Ryan, didn't, didn't we, didn't we already approve some more money for the expanding of the SCADA system and for this digital or the remote access? Is that, is this not part of that?
No, that was a, that was a separate item. I think it was in the, I think it was about.
That was within the.
Yeah, it was an upgrade piece as they were upgrading the other two substations. This is more just a network, but they all interconnect, so, but you're right, there was one previously.
Any other comments or questions? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
7.4, discussion and possible action to purchase acoustic panels for Calvert Meeting Room to minimize reverberation echo.
Enough said, right? Y'all don't need me going into any detail because y'all understand and feel our pain, right?
Sure.
So I went through this process of trying to identify sound treatment for the Calvert Meeting Room downstairs. So if anybody's been in there and had meetings, you know that we kind of echo, we're kind of, you know, our noise doesn't travel as well, we lose a lot of conversation. So I kind of did some research, reached out to a few noise specialists, kind of see what we could do. I sent them measurements of the room, you know, showed them pictures, and I got, um, a lady that actually worked with me and helped me and decided that we needed 350 feet of material that would be soundproof to help the, um, the echoing in the room. So I reached out to three, um, contractors basically to get their, um, bid or their proposal for the same amount of product that I received from the noise specialist. So I reached out to D Walls Acoustic Specialties, Noise Control Specialist, and the Heartland Acoustics Interior. Heartland Acoustic Interior did not supply me with a bid. D Walls quote was for 6384, and the noise specialist was 5403. These prices are just for the actual, um, panels. We will do the installation ourselves. I did verify with both contractors, the bids were the exact same product-wise, and then we'll just worry about the placement based on the recommendations of how we utilize the space.
Move to approve the quoting amount of $5,403.46 from Noise Control Specialists for 350 feet of acoustic panels?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
7.5, discussion and possible action regarding amendment to the City of Lampassus Personnel Policy, Section 8, Leave Time, Section 8.08, Public Service.
Mayor and Council, this was discussed in workshop. I think the one item that did come up was, uh, uh, perhaps, uh, geographical designation, and if Council would want to consider, you may consider either Lampassus or perhaps Lampassus County, uh, but that's, uh, that, that's the only input I believe I recall hearing other than to reinforce that we did, uh, this was at the, uh, um, option of the city in terms of their current workload and, uh, ability to, uh, not have any impacts on, uh, departmental duties.
Do you limit the hours?
The, the, uh, the, uh, recommended motion language does have a limitation, however, uh, it's up to, ever, uh, whatever Council would like.
Move to amend the City of Lampassus Personnel Policy, Section 8, Leave Time, Section 8.08, Public Service to include volunteering in community organizations and community festivals within Lampassus County up to 40 hours per week, or per year.
I'll second. I have a, excuse me, I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
One opposed. Thank you. 7.6, discussion and possible action regarding the renewal of the city's health insurance coverage for city employees with Scott &amp; White Health Plan for the October 1, 2022 to September 30, 2023 plan year, and authorize the city manager to execute related documents.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. As Finley mentioned earlier, um, this is a renewal for our health rates, um, and looking at the proposal that they had given us, it is a 4% increase. Um, as he did mention, we did put a 5% increase in the budget to, um, cover in case we did have an increase. Um, you will notice that they do also have a premier plan. Um, the explanation on the premier plan, that's a new plan that Scott &amp; White has come out with, but you have to use Scott &amp; White doctors. So it would eliminate our local doctors, our local hospital, Metroplex, they would not be covered. So we felt in the best interest of our employees to go with the plan that we currently have. I've also included a breakdown of current rates, the proposed. I've also included a breakdown of current rates, the proposed rates, and the impact to the city and to the employee.
If we could get a motion and a second, then we can maybe ask Yvonne some questions, if you have some.
I'd move to approve the renewal rate at 4% increase and authorize the city manager to execute those documents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So do we have any questions for Yvonne about this?
So it's under what we budgeted, because you expected this to come up?
Yeah, yes. I mean, we, we budgeted in there crossing our fingers, hoping that our rate would come back. So we've got it covered.
We didn't.
Go around here, it's going to take more time away from work, probably having to go to Scott &amp; White and.
It would. It would put a more burden, I believe, on our employees to, you know, people have been with local doctors 20 years, some of them, and they don't like change, so.
Seems you're pretty fortunate just to have the 4% increase.
Yes, we are.
Didn't, wasn't it, we didn't have an increase last year, did we?
We did not. The rate stayed the same last year.
Right.
And we do have a little bit more claims this year, not, not anything major, but a little bit higher.
I think 4% is reasonable.
4% in this market, I believe, is pretty good.
Any other questions or comments of Yvonne?
And, and the city's absorbing this, there's no additional cost to the employees, correct?
Well, there, there is going to be, we still do the 50%.
Okay.
But you'll see the breakdown down here.
It's minimal, it's relatively minimal.
How it's going to affect the employee. It will be a little bit of an increase to them.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks. 7.7, discussion and possible action regarding subscription to the MyLibro library app.
Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is actually Emily Stone. I'm the Assistant Librarian. So I'm here asking for the approval of the subscription for the MyLibro app for the library. Currently, what we use mostly is Facebook to communicate with our patrons and community on any events or closures we've had, especially with the weather we've had from winter months. We have had a couple of closures due to ice and snow. This is just one way to us quickly to communicate with them, and it's an app where you really don't have to use internet service. It's a quick download to your phones, other than that.
Move to approve the subscription to the MyLibro?
Yes.
App for the library.
Before we go any further, there's two options there. We need to see which one you're approving.
I'm, I'm sorry?
You have two options for your app? One is costing $24.75, and the other one is $29.50?
I believe it's the $29.50.
Okay. Do you see that here? See, this is just for that one, and then this is for the upgraded version. Does it include that in it?
Is that the amount?
Hmm?
That's the amount.
On the back of that page is the cost.
$29.50 is the second one.
But I believe it's the $29.50, the annual subscription.
Is that the one you're looking for?
It is, Mayor and Council.
Previously, they had all of that available for one price, and just July 1st, they split it up, and so you have to pay extra for some of the stuff that was included already. But, okay.
So, well, just out of curiosity.
So I'd like to include the amount, and then let's talk about it.
That sounds good.
And the amount of $2,950 for the annual subscription.
So I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Okay, questions?
Okay, so my question is, what's the difference between the starter and the digital? Because to be the difference in the price, what are the, what are the features that y'all need in that additional that, you know, to justify the cost?
So the, the $29.50 also includes the ability to like link our Overdrive, which is the eBooks and e-audio books, and also our calendar. So that will pull from the city's website, the calendar of events, things, it'll pull that, like an RSS feed onto the app as well. So those are, I think, the main extras that they're charging for.
So that's going to allow the, the people that use the MyLibro app to be able to access Overdrive and all that stuff?
Yes.
Whereas if you didn't do that, they wouldn't have access to that anymore?
They would have access, but they'd have to go to another, their other app, whereas this will be all in one. So this is going to have, this is like our catalog page where they log in to view their accounts?
Mm-hmm.
And the city website, and our Facebook, like, it's all in one. It's going to just pull from everything and be all in one place.
Okay.
Yvonne, we've got that budgeted, that amount?
We have the funds available. It was not budgeted, which is why we're here, but we do have funds available in our budget, so.
Sounds good.
Any other comments or questions? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, ladies. 7.8, discussion and possible action regarding a Linux AC unit at the old wastewater office to deem a surplus and allow staff to dispose of as state law allows.
Mayor and Council, and as you know, the Water Wastewater Office and Lab was just recently built, the new one. This is the older facility that's across the parking lot, and they're looking at possibly starting the demo process on this building. It's old and needs to go down. But in the meantime, they were looking at the Linux AC unit that they had that was in relatively good condition. It was purchased back in 2014, so they wanted to be able to utilize it to a nonprofit in the area. They were originally reaching out to Lampassus County Youth Livestock for the show barn, but it's not compatible. It needs more of, this is more of an industrial three-phase system, so it wasn't going to work for the show barn. But if we can find another nonprofit, we would like to go that route. Otherwise, we would like to go ahead and put it on GovDill so we can go ahead and get it off the building.
Move to declare the AC unit at the old Water Wastewater Office a surplus and allow staff to dispose of as state law allows, and by trying to find a nonprofit first.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Let's go home.